Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to welcome everyone back to the Library Board of Trustees. They have a monthly meeting. My name is Duane Fabian and I'm the Chair of the Board. And at this time, I want to call the meeting to order. We will now have our invitation by Pastor Jamiro Miller of One Step Faith in Hampton, Georgia.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
First, I want to say thank you all for having me tonight. It's an honor to be here with you guys tonight. Let us pray. Father God, we just thank you for this day. Father, we thank you that this is the day that you have made. Father, we will trust in you with all of our heart, all of our souls. God, we'll link not to our own understanding, but in all of our ways, we will acknowledge you, and you will direct our path. Father, we thank you right now for all of the decisions that will be made. Father, we just lean on you. And Father, we just ask you to cover every board member, every person that is connected to this Board of Trustees. And Father, we ask you to watch over them, lead and guide them. And as in your Son, Jesus, then we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you again.
Okay, Pastor, you know, we took a picture.
Okay, awesome, awesome. Okay, sure.
All right, we would like to thank Pastor Miller for our invitation to get us started on this monthly journey. The next item on the agenda will be our role call. Madam Secretary, can we call the role, please?
Yes. Duane Fabian.
He's present.
Herman Andrews. Shernice Shaw. Ebony Brown. Shepherd Isaac.
Present.
Quinn Lee. Trina Colawal, is that correct?
Colawal Lee.
Oh, Colawal. Sherri Gates.
Present.
And Sabrina Skidmore, I'm present. And Brenda Gutierrez.
Present.
Salima Abdullah.
Heran is here, Madam Secretary. Just start.
Okay, Madam Secretary, do we have a call?
We did.
All right. We're invited on. I need a motion for the pull of the agenda, and I'll make the motion if we approve the agenda to their side. Yes, sir. It was properly moved by Trustee Shepherd. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposes? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda will be the approval for the minutes for August 12, 2025 board meeting. I get a motion, please.
So move.
It's been properly motioned and moved by Vice Chair Andrews. Is she a second?
Present.
Second by Trustee Gutierrez. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, oh, excuse me, say as it was. All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda will be the approval for September 9th board meeting. I get our motion, please.
I make a motion to approve it.
It's been properly moved by Trustee Skidmore. Is she a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Gates.
I have the correct, yes. On the second page, under directions report, under retirements. That should be Ann Celeste, not Van, that's a dictator. Should be Ann, Celeste. Thirty years of service.
Yes.
I give the time, yes.
If you have any questions, say Ann. Ann, A-N-N.
A-N-N.
Oh, A-N-N. Okay, got you. All right. I'm going to move this again. I'm going to make a motion with the correction, Ann Celeste, for thirty years of service. I need a motion to approve this report. I have.
Make a motion to approve it.
Okay, it's been moved by Trustee Skidmore. Is she a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Gates. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda will be public comments. Madam Secretary, do we have any?
We do not have any.
All right. Next item on the agenda will be directions report.
How we doing? Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everyone?
Great.
Fantastic, fantastic. Good seeing everyone. Thank you to the Clayton County Library Assistant staff for the wonderful work that they do. Thank you all for the Board of Trustees for your support as well. I'm Scott Perrin, the Director for the Clayton County Library System, and I have a few updates for the month of September that I'd like to just breeze through real quickly for you. So for the month of September, for the Coffee with the Librarian, I had the distinct pleasure and honor of chatting with Dr. Royal Baxter, who is the new Workforce Development Officer for Clayton, Chamber of Commerce. And we had a very robust conversation, and she was just a pleasure to sit and have a conversation with. We also, you may see a picture, we had some pictures coming up, had the opportunity to speak with the senior group at the Lovejoy Library, Ray's Old School Corps. So several trustee members, myself, Deputy Director Stanley, I had a chance to spend, it was probably about a good two hours with him, and answered some questions and had a nice conversation with that senior group also. That senior group has started, started about eight years ago, and it started as a small group, and they've grown to about eighty members at this point. And I think we spoke to roughly about thirty, maybe thirty, if I said that correctly. Next important point I would like to mention is, in September, we had our Fall State Directors' Meeting. As you are probably well aware, their library director meetings, three times a year. So we have a spring, a fall, and a winter. And so this was the fall meeting, and it was held in Athens, Georgia. And we go through some training, updates, committee meetings, things of that nature. But we were actually recognized at this meeting by GLS, which is the Georgia Department for the Blind andblind to Save them, for the work that we did in collaboration for the summer reading program that we posted here at the Northwest Library. And so they presented several staff members with certificates of appreciation, as well as presenting myself and Deputy Director Stanley with a nice little plaque. So that was very nice, unexpected recognition for the work that we did. We are in full swing for the conference season. And so September, Assistant Director Kimberly Clayton attended the Library Journal Safety Summit, which was held in Hartford, Connecticut. And library professionals from across the country convened to discuss safety trends and common issues that affect public libraries. September 5th, Rebecca James, Laura Ebby, and Kim Jones, and Kimberly Clayton, attended the 2025 Outreach Bananza, which was held at the Coweta County Public Library. As Ms. Clayton, she represented Clayton County Library System and actually presented on the topic of external collections and community buying. September 17th through the 19th, we were at the Directors' Meeting. And coming up this Monday, actually tomorrow, I lead for the Library Journal Director Summit, which is in Denver. And I'll be in Denver the remainder of this week. And following me, Deputy Director and I will be in Cincinnati for the Urban Library Council's Directors for. So it's a lot going on, and so you'll see me today and probably won't see me here for a few weeks, but nevertheless, in full swing. So those were the, well, I got one wrong, I'm sorry. In your packet, an email that was sent out, we do have an MOU that will be loaded on by the Board Commissioners coming up at the next BOCB. And that is in agreement with an organization called StoryCorps. StoryCorps is an organization that helps to record oral histories. And so if you have family members that either are getting of an age and you would like to interview them so that their history, their personal lives are actually recorded and archived, we are partnering with that organization so that we can make those records available and have them archived. And so it is a wonderful opportunity, again, just to have those discussions and dialogue with family members who have very rich histories and don't want to lose that information. So, yes, sir.
The spelling, is it C-O-R-E?
C-O-R-P. It's like Marine Corps. And those were my highlights. Any questions?
I have a question, but I do want to make comments on two different subjects.
Yes, sir.
The first one would be Ray's Old School. Mr. Wilster is doing a great job.
Wilcox.
Wilcox.
Yes.
Right. He's doing an awesome job at Ray's Old School. I mean, for me to sit there for the length of time that he's been here, hear the testimonials from each person of what tragedy has sparked their lives, being an illness, being an illness of a family member or a friend, and just hear those praise reports that's coming out. And I really enjoyed that part. And then not only that, you have members from citizens from other counties, just even their county, coming to Clayton County for Ray's Old School, asking for volumes right there.
It's a very special group. It is indeed. In each meeting, they start out by saying what they're grateful for. Everyone takes a turn and goes around. And again, if you're feeling some kind of way, listening to some of the other folks express what they're grateful for and why they're there at that particular meeting, and fellowshipping with everyone else, it kind of uplifts you. And yeah, it is a special group. Again, thank you for that.
Yes, and I want to also thank Trustees Gates and Isaac Shepherd for coming in with us as well. And they took time out of their, their day to stop for the duration of the meeting. And so asking for volume of them stepping in as well. The second thing I want to discuss about the leadership conference. Since knowing you, all I ever heard was leadership conference here, leadership conference there. That tells me that's why you're in the position that you're in, because of the leadership that you're carrying by wanting to give the conferences to, for higher education, for better learning, so you can bring that talent back to Clayton County to your staff. Keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you. I think it's very important, not just for me to increase my professional development, but as you said, to bring it back to Clayton County. That's just one aspect of it. The other aspect is, usually when I go to these conferences, and I'll have my name badge on, and they're like, where's Clayton County? And I'll have, it's Metro Atlanta, just south. If you've ever flown into the airport, it resides in Clayton County. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Now, more and more, they're like, oh, hey, Clayton County. I want us to be on not just the local level, statewide, but national. And so by attending these conferences, I've been very deliberate on being and taking, listening to the discussion, seeing what's going on in not just the United States, but the Urban Libraries Council I mentioned a moment ago. That is North America. So it's Canada and the United States, and looking at branching out into Mexico as well. And so seeing the commonalities, seeing the differences, seeing how we can improve, and seeing how our different communities are affected by libraries, and what we do is able to change lives in our communities. So I think it's very important that we continue with the professional development of these conferences. We've got some folks on staff who are doing some amazing, amazing things. And so as you'll hear, some of it poured out during these meetings. I have Assistant Director over here, who was just elected to the Georgia Library Association. She will be the new president of the unit. We're doing some wonderful things here.
Oh, great. I appreciate that. You mentioned something about Mexico. You bust upon your Spanish?
Uh, no señor. But we have mango. And as a date is, we can learn from it. Absolutely. So, and my last bullet point, and you'll hear more next month, but yesterday, we had our annual staff development day. And this is a day where we bring, we close off branches, we bring the entire staff together. And we spend a full day training, fellowship, learning, and having fun. And so we did that yesterday. Some of you were in attendance. Again, thank you for being present and participating with us. You'll hear more about that in next month's, but thank you all again for participating and being present. And so if there are no more questions, we can move to the next one.
Thank you. So, moving to the next item on the agenda, which will be the directions report.
As we are just a couple of months into this fiscal year, we are spending here, spending there. As you may notice, some of the budget lines have zero, and I think I explained before, we consolidated several of those accounts. And so as we are spending, those will be reflected internally, but if there are any glitches or any meaningful purchases or financial aspects, I'll definitely bring those to your attention.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The fiscal year, has it started already? Is it one October?
No, sir. We start one July.
One Ju, okay.
All right. Any other questions? We want to accept your report as read. Next item on the agenda will be Deputy Director's Report.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. I'm Sherri Stanley, Deputy Director for the Clayton County Library System, and it is so great to see everybody's smiling face tonight, this evening. So, the month of September is filled with activities and events and excitement. So let's take a moment to highlight some of the things that were on different branches. So Library Card Sign Up Month, September card, Library Card Sign Up Month. And we hosted a variety of activities and events designed to encourage patrons to sign up for library cards. And so for the month of September, we're proud to present that we hosted a total of three hundred and ninety-five programs, with a total participation of five thousand two hundred and forty-one patrons. And so this includes a hundred and eight children's programs, with a participation of two thousand eighty-eight. Forty-seventeen programs, total participation of four hundred and forty-three. And two hundred and forty adult programs, with two thousand seven hundred and ten participants. And so kudos to the staff of Clayton County Library System for hosting and facilitating these programs. National Voter Registration Drive engages Clayton County communities. And so on September 16th, all six locations of the Clayton County Library System participated in the National Voter Registration Drive. So each branch hosted representatives from the Divine Nine, NAACP, and the Clayton County Children Registration Department. And we would like to thank everyone who participated in the voter registration drive. Also, we would like to highlight at the Riverdale Branch, our own, very own trustee, Herman Drew Andrews, participated representing the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, also serving as the Chair of the Clayton County Democratic Party, and the Vice Chair of the Clayton County Library Board. The Clayton County Library System, in partnership with Goodwill of North Georgia, hosted a job fair here at the Northwest Branch. We attracted four hundred and six citizens to come out. We got a chance to come by. Everyone was dressed, suit, tie, slacks, had resumes in hand, and so this was a wonderful event. Also, September 15th through October 15th is National, this is observed as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And many of the branches created displays and programs. And so at the Forest Park Branch, Mr. Space celebrated by having a family program titled Mexican Cooking for Kids. So during this program, patrons got a chance to come on, have hands-on experience cooking tortillas, as well as exploring Mexican culture through song, live music, and stories. Also, for Library Card Sign Up Month afterwards, the families were invited to participate, and they had a school, after-school tour. The Lovejoy Branch, they celebrated National Hispanic Heritage Month by passive programs, displays, information, bookmarks, so that patrons could take home different materials and explore the culture. Also, at the Morrow Branch, they had a special tribute by ancestral roots, which highlighted the Hispanic heritage from the perspective of Puerto Rican descent. And so Mr. Rodney Mason, founder of the non-profit Vital Food Exchange, brought together an ensemble featuring a journalist, interpreter, and they shared different insights in music representing the library culture. For outreach, the Youth Services Department actively participated in Curriculum Night with the Clayton County Public Schools. And so on September the 11th, the Bookmobile was also highlighted, and we brought up the Bookmobile. The Bookmobile visited the Robert T. Smith Elementary, where staff assisted several families in connecting with the PTA president. The interactions were, we had eight children and eleven adults. September the 18th, the Bookmobile was out and our Youth Services staff at the Red's Middle, Red's Mill Middle School, Curriculum Night, which we were able to engage seventeen children, twenty-four teens, and thirty-three adults, and share information. The principal actually came out with the administrative staff and expressed how wonderful the Bookmobile, just the interaction with parents, with teachers. And so they asked that in February, they have a state event, and we will participate. And this event is known to attract around five hundred participants. So we're very excited about that. And then September the 25th, the Bookmobile and the Youth Services staff were at Charles Drew High School. And so they got a chance to engage with two children, eleven teens, and twenty-three adults. Let's talk about some upcoming initiatives. So the Clayton County Library System debuted a new book talk podcast called Litific Conversations. The podcast will focus on introducing hot topic books in the CCLS collection, while also highlighting a bibliotherapeutic component of literature by inviting local mental health professionals to discuss essential wellness themes in the monthly titles. And so that is our very own Assistant Director, Kimberly Clayton, and so yeah. So if you're doing that show, they have already posted, please go to the Clayton County YouTube page and get a chance to hear this wonderful, wonderful conversation and book talk. Also, coming up, the Clayton County Library System is proud to host the African-American Distinguished Georgia Writers' Exhibit. And so this is generously honored from the Georgia Writers' Museum in Edens, in Georgia. And so the exhibit will feature three authors, and that should be coming in the month of November. So we will stay tuned for that, and this is going to be very exciting for Clayton County citizens. Any questions from our report?
No question.
No question, but a comment. I was at Commissioner Davis Town Hall Saturday, and he mentioned that the library is having something in Braille, is that?
Braille Bingo.
Braille Bingo. Lord, I want to play. I never heard that before, but when he said it, I was like, yeah, we are, damn. And it goes back to Ms. Jones, Kim Jones, when I seen her at September 16th, the National Day of Registration, and she was there at the block, block party. But, you know, I have this great sense of, I'm filled with this great sense of pride every time I see us out and about, you know? Like, I'm a part of that. And so circling back to what was said at Town Hall, I was filled with such sense of pride. I was like, yeah, we doing that. But Ken, what is that? I've never heard of that before.
It's good for me as well, how our partnership with GLS has afforded us opportunities to do different things to the accessibility community. And so if you recall, a couple months ago, we had the Cinta Paint, where we had, what was it, almost twenty blind or?
Visually impaired.
Visually impaired. Twenty or so visually impaired participants doing paint set. And so the facilitator of that used a hot glue gun to outline the different patterns on the painting itself, so that it helped the participants stay within line, and she was going around helping with the different colors and whatnot. So for the Braille Bingo, I'm not exactly sure, but.
We have the details. We just have the details. So it will be on November 17th, 12 to 2. It's going to be a lunch and learn at the headquarters.
Headquarters.
Yes.
You said, what time?
November 17th, 12 to 2.
So the cards will be in Braille, and they will call out the numbers, and then we'll fill in the cards according to the Braille, Braille of Cards.
Yes, ours will be. It's a lunch, it's a lunch and play.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, the Braille Bingo is a lunch and play, so you will have to reserve your space so that we can make sure that everyone has a healthy lunch provided for them.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. In our community, we have a growing Asian community. And I want to know, do we have anything else to carry on that celebrates Asian culture, specifically Japanese? I was having a match with a Japanese friend about recently, and I was telling him about the library, and that is one of the questions I can, I cannot really answer your question. So.
Yeah, we do celebrate Asian specific, um, Allender Month, and that's in May. And so we have a lot of programs dedicated, and throughout the year, because, because we do.
You said Asian, but not.
Specific Allender Month, that is the month of May. So we do highlight, but however, we have a diverse community, so we're always putting on programs throughout the year, not just when the month is happy. Yes. So if you go to our Clayton County Calendar online, claytonpl.org, click on the calendar events, and you can see, because we do have, we offer something.
If there are suggestions, if your friend does have some suggestions for some programs specifically for the Japanese community, we would love to hear them. Okay. And if they would like to participate, or sponsor, or host, or we can have the resources to bring someone in, we would absolutely. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda will be the committee report, and I announced it. Have a seat, committee. Do we have any trustee that needs to have that advocate at any branches during the month?
I do.
Trustee Gates.
I do. I did a lot for the second time. I'm going to try to be precise with it. And Director Nancy and Chair has already spoken on some of it, so. So I'll just touch on my feelings towards the things I participated in. I was really out and about the last month. I did attend a September coffee with the librarian, and I was thrilled to be able to support my classmate, graduated Clayton State Together, the same class, Dr. Royal. So I was thrilled to be there to hear her speak and celebrate her becoming the director of Workforce Development for the Clayton County Chamber of Commerce. So got a chance to do that. She also shared her future initiatives with her partnerships, plans for partnership with the Clayton County Library. The replay, the replay is on the Clayton County Library YouTube. Please check these replays out. I go to these things in person, but I still go back and listen. It's always something to learn with coffee and library. On September sixteenth, I, you already know that Hispanic Heritage Month, it's celebrated from September fifteenth through October fifteenth. I went to a couple of branches. One Morrow, their program, their Morrow put on was magnificent, highlighting the Puerto Rican culture. We had artists, the spotlight was on music, dancing. We had a journalist who wrote a magazine, I mean, not magazine, a newspaper from Mayan. There was a lot of model wearing the traditional Puerto Rican clothing. And it was, it was awesome. It was well-attended, and I've been to Puerto Rico, and that's actually one of my favorite places to visit. I'm inspired to go back. So I thoroughly enjoyed that program. It was interactive, it was lively, and like I said, that was a great program. The emcee, Mr. Mason, told me to give you all a message. He told me to give the board a message, because I did a chat with him afterwards. He told me to make sure I report to the board what a wonderful time we had. So I'm reporting to the board that that was a very good program. And Mr. Mason told me he works closely with Barbara Rose, who was the branch manager, doing a lot of cultural diversity programs. So that's my shout-out to Mr. Mason. On September twenty-third, this forum with the seniors was amazing. Everybody knows, you know, I have this thing for senior citizens. That's my passion, it has always been. And sitting on, there to hear them was an honor and a pleasure. The words that come to my mind, prayer, gratitude, inspiration, longevity. There were seniors there from all walks of life. Just a fun fact, the oldest member is ninety-one years old. There are artists, writers, musicians, singers, poets. One member shared the most beautiful poem that I hope is somewhere that I can read it again. I don't know if she's going to publish it, but it was amazing. And we even have a member that's a WNBA Hall of Famer. I thought I wrote her name down, and I didn't. But I do need to get Mr. Will Cost to get her name. So I got a chance to talk to her a little bit, take a selfie with her. And I just want to add, if anything I discuss in these meetings, if you're interested in more, I take lots of notes, and I take lots of pictures and videos. So anybody that wants to hear more, just hit me up, and I would love to chat with you, show my pictures, my videos. So also, the forum, like I keep saying, it was amazing, and I'm glad I can be there. They, they shared, the members shared concerns, commendation, and compliments to the staff and to the leaders of our library system. We do have an amazing library system. They also provide a wish list for the libraries. But they'll let the director get it done. So, okay. On that same day, after I left there, I'm sorry. After I left there, I visited the Lovejoy Library. So now I can say that, as a trustee, I have visited all the branches and spent time with them. The Lovejoy Branch was so excited to show me their, their space. And at that time, I did see their Hispanic display. As Deputy Director Stanley described earlier, Ms. Regina was just thrilled to take me throughout the whole library. I met everybody, and they made me promise to come back. So I will be back before the end of the year. On ten-seven, I attended Forest Park Branch Library to hear Avery Dixon, who is an amazing saxophonist. He's one of Stacy's former students, and he also became a contestant. I want to say the second runner-up, maybe, of America's Got Talent. When I tell you I sat there and he, I have lots of videos. I mean, not a lot, not a lot, but if you just want to hear a snippet, because I try to be in the presence, so I take a quick snippet. But he's amazing, and he has made an amazing story to tell about bullying. So look him up on YouTube if you want to know more. And I will, oh, you know, I got a little more, I'm sorry. Should I not talk about the staff of the building since you said next one, repeat? Okay, okay, I'll save that for a piece. But my last, my us part of my report, I have a concern from a staff member, a commendation from a community member, and a book will be in sight. So we're going to first start with the concern. A staff member at Morrow came to me and asked me about what's the status on the leaky, leaky roof situation. So I told him I would bring it to the board. You know, they said that they already discussed the leaky roof, and how the roof is made, how it leaks, and how it's hard to get repaired. So I told him I would bring it to you all, so I'll bring it to you. The commendation was from a community member. I was out and about, and this person asked me what did I do, and I told them. And they shared their most positive, they shared that they had a positive experience with the Riverdale Branch. She went in to redo her library card, and she ended up leaving with a Georgia State Park pass that she used the next day. She went to the Sweet Water Creek State Park for a hike and shared her most amazing day. But she told me to let all know that the Riverdale staff was very, very good. The last thing is the Bookmobile sighting. I was thrilled to see the Bookmobile rolling through my neighborhood. Then I pulled up, it was rolling.
You have to find out who was driving.
I know who was driving, because I pulled up aside and blew my horn, rolled my window down. So I would just love to see the Bookmobile out and about. So I'm sorry for the lengthy report, but that's been my month, my month with Clayton County.
The Bookmobile sighting. That's right, I need to post that.
All right, do you have any of the trustees wanting to report? All right, well, I will just echo what Trustee Gait said. Myself and Vice Chair Andrew, we have been at all six libraries in our town on this board so long. You, we should be catching up with us.
She's been everywhere.
She's been everywhere. Everywhere. All right, next item on the agenda will be the announcement of our Secretary of Defense, Vice Chair.
Yes, you know, there's been at least two board meetings, not more. We've been trying to elect a secretary. I still have not received a phone call, anyone interested. But at this point, I would like to open the floor up for anyone who's interested in, you know, filling that, that position of secretary.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. So we're moving to the next item on the agenda will be the unfinished business. It will be the nomination of a secretary. And I would like to make the first motion, or excuse me, the first nomination that I think that we should nominate, although she's new on this board, but she has to go to work. She's not a stranger to documenting documentation, and I think that we ought to just give her a chance to see how well she can do, which I know she's going to do well. She has a strong leadership position in the community. I think that she can do well here, and I would like to nominate that, nominate Sager Skidmore for secretary.
I second that. She has already proven she is very capable.
Anybody else wanting to make a nomination for anybody?
I'm going to accept.
All right, we're making a decision. So hearing that, I'd like to get a motion, and I'll make the motion, that we approve trustee Sager Skidmore for secretary. Is there a section?
I do have a section.
It's been, I'm going to move the secretary by trustee Shepherd. Are there any questions? Hearing that, or if they would say aye?
Aye.
Any opposedes, any objections? All right, motion passes, congratulations. All right, next item on the agenda will be the new business, and let's let me be a little bit clear when I say this. It's the editing of the Bible laws. We've been through this here more than one time. A month before last, we discussed about the Bible laws and the number of meetings a trustee can miss before being removed from the board. And we went from three to went to six. And I had someone call me and talk about it, and I more than heartily to agree with them that if you miss six meetings, you already missed fifty percent of the board. And so he had a reason being here. And so we're not going to vote on this tonight. I'm just going to put it on the agenda for the next month for us to vote on, that we move it back, excuse me, we back it. We put it out on the agenda for unfinished business. Hopefully by that time, the GLS would have told us something about the voting online. Okay, and hopefully all that could be incorporated together. Maybe we go back to the six, we go to three with some stipulations, and we hold firm to those stipulations, whether that may be when they are able to vote online, but they still can attend the board meeting. But we have moved this, we're just going to talk about it now. We can open for discussion now, but we're going to take this and go on to put the next unfinished board meeting. So right now, I'd like to open it up for anyone who wants to talk about it. If not, we move on.
I'd be interested in seeing what the state says about the virtual option. That would be, that would determine, you know, which way I want to.
Well, I think the state can be correct with my own record that I think the state already approved it, but they have now approved the voting. Is that correct?
Let me check. To my understanding, it's, we are working with the state library on the language and how we can incorporate the language into our Bible. The bill has already been passed and been approved. We have to now modify it to our Bible, and that's what we're waiting for. We've sent word or a message out to the state library and awaiting response back. So once we get that back, we can have the official language, and then we can incorporate this new part or the new edits into that.
Okay, and with that being said, is it going to be a different approach on, teleconference versus what we do now with YouTube?
I'll have to check. I don't think so, because we livestream. And as a matter of fact, we also are video conferencing, so that we can record it for different purposes. But let me check on that. But I think the impetus behind it was so that folks who were struggling or having issues meeting in person, they still wanted to participate. So the virtual option was on the floor, and you could also vote virtually. Now, it doesn't absolve this by from putting measures in place that also say you have to be present physically a certain number of times. But again, if you are out of sickness, other hospitalizations, there are those exclusions. And so we want to make sure we count for this.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, hearing that, next item will be the email.
I briefly mentioned it earlier in my updates. The memorandum of understanding that would be put before the Board of Commissioners is for partnership with an organization called StoryCorps. And if I can just read the summary. It creates an opportunity for community members and organizations in Clayton County to participate in storytelling and community archiving practices. StoryCorps will facilitate storytelling and oral history recording opportunities to build a sustainable community archive. So you will see that coming up at the next VOC.
Can't receive.
Okay. So also, your email that you recently received, there are several policy updates that we needed to incorporate into our library employee handbook. First one is the dress code policy. We will then talk about the mobile device policy, the library refund policy, and finally, the circulation policy. And Deputy Director Stanley will cover that one. So as times change, trends change, we need to make sure that we stay abreast of those. And so these edits are in response to those. I think the last time we looked at some of the edits in the handbook, it was 2018. And so it's pretty timely now that we look at some of these things and address them. And so for the dress code policy, I'm not going to brief the entire policy, as you should have received a copy. If there are any questions that you may have regarding the dress code policy, please let me know, and we can, I guess, discuss it at our next board meeting. But we wanted to address things mainly that the clothes are neat, they're clean. I'm not so much a stickler for wearing jeans or not wearing jeans. I think for a lot of our employees, especially our part-time employees, having a business casual wardrobe nowadays may be challenging. I just want folks who want to be at work to be at work. And the clothes are fitting, they're clean, they're presentable. I'm just glad you're here. And so the dress code really speaks to a lot of those, or that particular thing. We are taking into consideration clothes that are appropriate for the job that you do. So if you are in the stacks, shoving books, we don't want you to have a mid-trip shirt on to a rise up, or your pants are hanging to wear again. It's not presentable and unprofessional. So that's essentially what the dress code again addresses, updates. And so yes, if you've got your questions on it, let's move on. The next policy is the mobile device policy. That cell phone is something.
Yes, it is.
And for a lot of folks in Cooling Staff, they have, we have experienced staff members utilizing their cell phones or mobile devices either at the service desk or having headphones, earbuds, which could definitely interfere with your interaction, not only between your coworker, but also patrons. And so we were seeing quite a high number of incidents where folks would grab and tell them, you know, put your cell phone, it's not appropriate, keep it in your locker. If you have to make an emergency call, please step away from the desk, those types of things. So we looked at the handbook, made some adjustments, made some edits. And so that again is what you will see in the new mobile device policy, speaking of the earbuds, the headphones, and also privacy professionalism. They now have AI glasses, where you can record somebody through your glasses. And so making sure that no patron information, staff information is being used erroneously or without their permission or their knowledge. So again, that's the new mobile device policy. The locker refund policy, we didn't have that previously. We didn't have that previously. We used to have a strict policy that we didn't provide any refunds at all. Uh, but there were certain situations that were occurring and it was kind of, it doesn't make sense to not have something in place because wanting to be good stewards, wanting to be good partners with our community. There were times where there was a counter outage or something else happened in the middle of a transaction. And it was, it just didn't feel right by saying, oh, we can't do anything about that. And so, uh, we worked diligently with our legal department, Clayton County Legal Department, to come up with a refund policy. And so that's what you will see again if you're back and get a chance, an opportunity to look at that. And so the last one will be the circulation policy. And we've got kind of a show and tell.
So we have actually revised the circulation policy. You will see, um, some materials going around. And this is what we will be talking about and discussing. Also, you will have like a little handout that covers the materials and kind of a brief description. So we have made updates to the circulation policy under the limits and restrictions. And so you will see that it is highlighted in yellow. And so the policy is being revised, um, due to patrons dropping these items in the drop boxes. We're asking them to bring them inside of the branch. But a lot of times they may drop them off in the drop boxes, but we cannot charge because we do not have it clearly stated in the policy. So what we want to do is revise the policy because as you see with some of these materials, if they're dropped in the drop box and books are placed on top of them, it may damage them. So we just want to specify the language and make sure that it's clear. So that if we are going to charge, then they would know. Also, if you would turn to the second to the last page, under additional fees, this section was updated to reflect new replacement charges due to the rising cost of materials. So if we have to replace any of these materials, costs have gone up, so that is reflected in the price. And that is highlighted in the yellow as well. All right, any questions?
So, so what you have and what C L has handed out are the new materials that we offer that we didn't have in the previous circulation policy. And the fines and fees for damage or loss or return. So the package, printed package that you also received, the first page says launch pad, tablets. Who has a launch pad? Trustee Gates? Yes, that's a launch pad. So that's one of the newer devices that we have in our offerings. And so the new circulation policy reflects that equipment and the damage to it. Second page is box and wonderbooks. Who's got that?
Yes.
Open one of the books and so folks can try to see. So it's a book that reads, or you push a button and it's pretty important and it reads aloud as you're reading with the book. And so, and another nice addition to our collection. IR books. Just got the IR books. This is trustee Skidmore. And so the IR books are immersive reality books that combine virtual reality and augmented reality with a physical book. So there's a pair of Oculus VR virtual reality, God was in there, that allows you to look at the book and experience virtual reality as well as immersive reality. Wazoo. Just got the wazoo. There, trustee N T S. Would you mind opening it up and pulling the device out? Very. So the wazoo is an all audio adventure. It embarks on epic adventure where learning and fun are, are one and the same. It's a friendly guide that kids can explore a world of podcasts, music, short stories, and more on easy to use speaker. There's no Wi-Fi downloads or extra pieces available. Everything is pre-ordered on the device. And the last one is the pen working kit that you also have there. And that's a kit for kids ranging from birth to sixth grade. Each bag includes fun learning activities, games, and a book on a variety of subjects. Subjects such as phonics, coding, steam. And so all of these are offerings that we have. And you just need to make sure that the policy reflected the, the price point when they're damaged or when they don't return. And so that's what we'll be asking them to look at for the circulation policy.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are these items, like the, this right here, and what is that called again, audio?
The wazoo.
Yeah. Are those at every branch location or are they shared among the branches?
Every branch should have their own collection of each of these devices.
I have two questions. Um, I want to leave director Farm, but I have one for you, deputy director Stanley. So since you're there, on the, um, circulation policy, if they have to drop one of these devices off one of the drop boxes, of course, if the drop box is empty, I'm not sure the inside layer of the drop box, is there something that's padded in this? Or when it falls, it has something to break through, the cushion, break the fall?
I do not think so. Uh, most of the outside drop boxes have a metal bit inside. And I don't think there's any padding or cushion at the bottom of the drop box, which is another reason why we're strongly encouraging patrons, once they check them out, just bring them back to the service desk. We'll check them.
And then the, uh, second, um, item was about the mobile device. You know, time to time I've gone to different, and I'm not a stickler on it, but I've gone to different businesses. And you're going for a service and you're going to see a patron, a student, an employee more time on their cell phone than actually waiting on you, being on social media or just whatever. Of course, if you sit down and you're food and, and you're asking for a particular item or menu and next thing you see they on their phone, touching their phone, and they're going to put it in their pocket, you want them to be missing with your, with your food. So, um, is there a policy within the library system about social media? Do you want to follow social media?
Very good question. I'm glad you mentioned that. Um, last year sometime we had a staffing issue that involved social media. And we brought it to our human resources department. And at that time, they advised us to kind of hold off because they are looking at a county-wide social media policy. And so whatever county-wide policy comes out, we will, of course, adhere to that.
Well, that asked my question. Are there any other questions?
I know that in, in the workplace, uh, in the workplace, uh, that cellphone usage is one of the biggest challenges. Uh, certainly where in, in the area that I work in. And one of the things that they were considering and, uh, was something like a, I don't know, make this a black alley area where cell phones can't be used in certain areas. Now, something like that, I don't, I don't know. I have no idea what the cost would be. They never did that, uh, the company I work for. But do you guys know anything about something like that? Something that where you can't use your phone in certain areas and you can in other areas? Is, do you know about that technology?
I do not. And if I'm understanding properly, um, let me kind of talk it through. So all of our buildings have Wi-Fi throughout the entire building. So is it that there's a certain portion of the building where there's no Wi-Fi signal or no signal at all so that calls can't be transmitted? Or just a self-designated spot that the administration or the management determined you cannot use your phone?
No, it was, um, technology. The technology was that, for example, in this room, you can't have, don't have service. Something would block the Wi-Fi access. And in other rooms, maybe not. That's it. But we never did that, so I don't know about the technology and of course, the price.
Sure, sure. Call. And, and there are additional ramifications that I'm thinking of. Safety being one of them. And if you're in a certain place and something happened and you needed to make that call right then and there in that room, didn't have a causing issue. Uh, and being in a public facility with patrons and or staff, it may run into some issues. But I'm hoping that through policy and coaching and mentoring, that some of the, the challenges that we've encountered can kind of self-correct. So with this policy and if we had some strong leadership, I think we could do it.
Yeah, I, I agree with what you said and also, um, trustee Shepherd said. I know I've seen some county full meetings live on social media while they're in the workplace. I'm like, you know, you're in that real fine gray area. You're supervised, know that you're on duty on social media live. What are you doing? Are you actually getting paid by the county doing this? You know, so it speaks by you that, uh, that, that something has to be in place to coach these employees and these other duties and that, so therefore nothing happens and nothing come back home.
Okay, and we all know how big social media is.
Oh, yeah.
It's content. It's, it's influencers, it's big. Um, and, and we use properly like our programs and events. We live stream, we are on platforms as well. And so we use it as a marketing tool and as a promotional tool. And, and we hope that folks would do the same. Um, now if you're on the circulation desk and you're on the clock and you, let me sneak in a quick one. Hey, uh, look what I'm doing. Uh, you know, kind of front and compact, uh, that's self-promotion type thing. But using it for purposes that it's intended for, to promote the library, the services that we provide, uh, the resources that we provide, then, yeah, we'll continue to utilize the best we can.
I think that some of that would really fall back to, um, the leadership and them being properly trained so that they're, they know to hold the people that, that, that is their direct report, that they hold them accountable. You know, I mean, as, when I was a manager, um, I was in a fashion place and had a lot of employees and we had the same exact problem. And so I just made it a policy that I checked their social media on a regular basis. And if I noticed they were under my watch and they were live, you know, um, then I addressed that the next time. So I think some of it falls within that, the leadership.
Yeah. And that was the, the instance or the issue that I brought with a former staff person. Um, that's how we came across it. Somehow or another, their personal platform got linked to one of the libraries. And so when we went there, you see this person, personal, it's like, whoa, whoa, whoa. Right. And so, um, we'll, we'll just do what we can.
Yeah.
Put measures in place at the end of it, like you said. Hold them accountable, make sure their clear expectations are.
Is there any other questions? All right, next item on the agenda will be the adjournment. So if we have more of business here?
I, I have, uh,
Yes, vice chair.
Just an announcement. Um, today is the first day of early voting. Uh, hence is why we're meeting here versus the headquarters. Um, so I encourage us to go back to our network of friends and those who are watching. Um, I encourage you to go to the board of elections, uh, to look at the sample ballot uh, so you won't be caught flat-footed when you go into the polls. And you'd be able to do some homework, you know? Also, there's two referendums that are on this, uh, ballot. One is the special purpose local option sales tax, which means that everyone who travels through Clayton County and make a purchase, a penny goes towards, it states here in Clayton County, goes towards, uh, our, uh, Clayton County operations, uh, resources like libraries and everything. Uh, also, uh, referendum of homestead exemption uh, for those who are seniors sixty-five and, uh, disabled, uh, veterans a hundred percent. So those two referendums on there. And then there's two city municipalities where, uh, they are, they are running their, uh, vote, uh, voting process. So that means there'd be two locations for their residents to go to. That's the city of Morrow and the city of Riverdale. And so those who are listening, uh, if you live in the, those cities, I recommend you get in contact with your city officials at city hall to ask where is it that you, uh, need to vote. Uh, and also remember, you also have, uh, you know, a responsibility to vote on the county side for those referendum. So, uh, early voting starts today. It ends October thirty-first. The hours are, uh, eight AM to seven PM. There's even weekend voting, uh, coming up this Saturday and Sunday. Pastor, uh, slows to the polls, uh, this, this, uh, eighteenth. And then there'd be another opportunity for twenty-sixth. And then of course, November fourth is the actual day of election. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to share that.
You're welcome. All right. Hearing nothing else, I give a motion to adjourn. I motion to adjourn. Okay, and, um, I will move by trustee Gates. Is there a second?
Second.
You're second by trustee Shepherd. Are there any questions?
None.
Hearing that, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposedes? Any objections? Good night.
Good night.